As you know, we started this process several months ago and we'll see if this... All right, right? So you'll see back in the winter of 2017, we engaged kind of our partner, our architectural partner in this process, DLR. Kristen's here in the front row from DLR, raise your hand, because my guess is she's going to chime in answering some of your questions later. In the spring, we started having community meetings. We also had DLR go through every building individually, kind of assess what was going on, right? And then in the summer, we had a core team that comprised of some administrators, some community members, and they started going through some of this data on a detailed basis. And then in the fall, we went through it and developed these renovation ideas kind of for each, for each site, right? And if you've been to some of those, right, each site had kind of a plan to address the issues that were on that site. There were no dollars at that time, right? And then in January of 18, we had a presentation from DLR and one of our kind of valued partners, Pepper Construction. And Lance, if you'll raise your hand in the back. Lance has done a lot of work for the district representative, Pepper. We use them to do estimation of really big, big projects, right? So at this point, I'm going to pause, right, and because we need to convene our meeting. Are you ready?
I am.
So we're going to call our board meeting to order. We'll begin with a roll call.
Brian Battle.
Here.
Penny Casimir.
Here.
Angela Wilcox.
Here.
Mike Shackleton.
If you guys, this is an official board meeting, if you'll stand and join us in the place. My pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
You guys did good. That was a nice, rich song. So when Lance presented the numbers to us, right, as we kind of all expected, right, our appetite was probably much bigger than our budget, right? Everything we wanted to do, when you summed it up across all the districts, all the sites, was probably well in excess of $500 million, right? So we kind of knew the next part of this task, which is where we are now, is to try to establish K-12 priorities, right? So the board began that after we got the numbers in January. And what you see, and I hope, and I should, it's a little housekeeping, does everybody have one of these big charts, paper pieces of paper? And did everybody pick up? Do we have envelopes again? Did we do envelopes again? Did everybody pick up an envelope?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll get to the envelope in a second, right? So you've got this, so what the board did, right, what we had to do was try to say kind of what are the K-12 priorities? And we looked at them kind of by levels, right? And then we kind of picked some somewhat arbitrary budget points, right? And what we did, after some discussion and review, we asked DLR and Pepper to break out some of the detail that was embedded in that, that kind of master level plan at each site into some smaller line items. And you see those reflected on this, on this piece of paper. A quick comment about the individual numbers, because that's an obvious question, the people had to, how'd you come up with these numbers? When Lance, Lance did the responsible thing, he gave us a range. It's essentially a range for each one of these line items, it's like plus or minus 5%. What you see here on this sheet represents the midpoint of that number, right? But at that, it's important to understand that these numbers are not hard numbers that are the result of an engineering plan and going out to bid, right? These are kind of high-level estimates, right? And, and part of our, our job here is to try to focus on the things we want to focus on. We will then ask our, you know, DLR and Pepper to maybe go do a deeper dive and come up with firmer numbers. But these are numbers at this point that we feel are good enough to try to estimate the order of magnitude of the costs. Now, some may find that some of these are higher than what you would expect, right? That's kind of always the case, by the way, for board members, right? We always think, why does it cost so much? But I will tell you, and we've all asked these questions, and Lance has done a lot of schoolwork, has had good answers. Schools do cost more money to work on, in kind of a dollar per square foot than a house or a commercial building, right? The materials used, you're trying to build a school that's going to last a longer period of time with minimal maintenance, you know, 50, 70, 80 years. We tend not to use a lot of drywall, but masonry, brick, mortar, plus you got specialized areas in schools, right? So as a general rule, right, the numbers that we see here are kind of, a lot of the renovation and addition space represents like almost like a $400 a square foot estimate, right? Elementary could be a little bit lower, high school sometimes a little higher, middle school kind of in the middle. That's kind of the, the scope of, of the cost structure. The, the dollars also represent a little bit of inflation, right? Because we know, we're still in the planning stage, if we, to fund any of these, we'd have to go to referendum. That's going to be at some point in the future, right? Once it gets past the referendum approval, then you're going to have more engineering work and bidding work to do, so there's going to be a built-in lag time, right? If we were to do, depending kind of what the scope of our work we decide is, there's no way we're going to get all this done in one year, right? There's going to be several years required to build all this up. So, you know, there's some of the things on here, we talked about safety and security, some of these can be done right away after a referendum, others are going to require some engineering work, so you may not be able to begin it for a year, right? And then depending on the scope that we pick, if we pick a small scope, we might be able to get everything done in a year or two. If we pick a bigger scope, it might take, you know, three or four years. So Lance, you know, built in, in these estimates, a little bit of cost inflation. Construction costs do go up on time. You know, we happen to look back at 20 years ago, and you know, your construction dollar is roughly 50% of what it was worth 20 years ago, right? So, so we do have inflation built into these numbers also. The last thing is just kind of a preface that I would say, is we started this process, you know, at the board level, as we were doing our long-term kind of outlook on the district, with the strategic view. And we have a number of bonds, right, that are coming off in 2021, right? So how many people were part of the slew of referendum that were approved in like the late 90s through 2001, right? So we got some hands here, you guys remember all that, right? And so, you know, there was a lot of building that went on at that time. That building was financed with 20-year bonds, right? Those 20-year bonds, and the way they were structured was relatively flat for us, right? So when you look at our district financials, right, we pay about $11 million a year in terms of paying the principal and interest on all those bonds, right? And that $11 million then gets divided up among all of us, right, for a $500,000 home in Barrington, that, that represents roughly $700, right? So, so that is due to come off of our tax bills in 2021, like paying off the mortgage. All done, right? And we as taxpayers can just, it's a reasonable argument to say, let's just, let's just take that savings, right? And so if we don't, if we do nothing, right, our tax bills, starting in 2021, will go down about $700 for a $500,000 home. Alternatively, we could take some portion of that, right, and reinvest it in the next round of building projects for the schools, right? That is the process we're in the middle of right now, trying to decide as a community how to do that, right? So in an effort to try to frame that conversation, right, we created this spring, this chart. And I think I would characterize our board comments, as we decided we wanted to schedule these, as we're kind of tired of talking to ourselves about this, we need to start talking to other people, right? So this is the third of three sessions to do that. So before we kind of open it up to some questions, let me quickly go through this for you, right? So up at the top, you see the levels to the side, you see the different budgetary levels going across the top, and you see the annual tax impact using today's tax bill as the baseline, right? So for instance, the one that's closest to break even is the 150, right? It's essentially a kind of a, you would save $19 per year for that $500,000 home off of today's tax level, right? If you go 80, you'd save 300 off of today's tax level. And then you see the other numbers as you go across, you spend more, obviously, those represent an increase from today's tax level, right? Now, as we prioritized it in this first one, we start with what we call Level One. I, I think we realized in the very first session that we probably should have called that something else. We all know what Level One means. What Level One is, is the basic infrastructure needs at every building. DLR, they went through an extensive facility assessment, everything from, you know, cracked walls to HVAC needs on the roof. You know, think of all that building health, and, and you know, the temperature controls, the water, the air, everything that you would need in those buildings for the next, you know, 10 or 20 years, right? So those are, are all what we call Level One, right? And you'll see, right, the bulk of those dollars, or a big hunk of those dollars, go to the elementary schools because there's eight of them, right? There's two middle schools and there's one high school, right? So that's Level One. Safety and security upgrades were also prioritized in the board in this first level. People have asked us a little bit about what that means, right? You can appreciate there are some things we're not going to talk about publicly in terms of security procedures and what this would mean. But what we have shared publicly is that it would be based on kind of the principle of compartmentalizing a building, right? So that if there ever was an incident in any one of our school buildings, we would have the ability to contain it. And there are different technologies to do that. The board has had a couple of closed-session discussions about this with our architects, and we've looked at a variety of different technologies. We have a basic plan that is included in these dollars. And if this was, what we would, if we were going to approve this, I think we have an idea what we would look at. And I think all community members who have shared different articles with us, you know, this school in Kansas was just built with some kind of state-of-the-art security and stuff, and you know, we'll go and we'll look at it. And there's nothing that you've seen that other schools have done that we haven't already reviewed, right? But the one thing I do want to leave with you is, is a lot of it has to do with compartmentalizing the building and also providing teachers in each classroom the ability to secure their classroom more efficiently, right? So that was what we prioritized as Level One. In the next level, you'll see there are furniture fixtures and equipment at each one of the levels, right? And this was, these are kind of budgetary numbers to try to provide a little bit of the flexible learning environments that we've been talking about through the Blueprint 220 process. And this would, this would enable teachers to have a different set of furniture in their room to try to be able to deliver education to the kids in a, in a more flexible manner. So you see that at each one of the levels. You also see at the high school, a set of some additions and renovations and a number of, and a lot of site work. And if you, you know, if you haven't looked at like, you know, some of the, the site work and the plans for each of the different buildings, they are available on our website, it was the Blueprint 220 thing, and each campus is kind of laid out. So in the high school, in this one, we've kind of prioritized the site work, right? And then if you go to the next column over, you'll see at the high school, we kind of complete some additions and renovations, complete some site work. At the middle school level, we add the work that would be required to add classrooms to Prairie and Station, so we can eliminate the demos. You know, and at this point, the other thing I wanted to mention is during our conversations about how to do this, DLR and Pepper kind of said, you know, some of these go together, right? You got to kind of move them together. So where you see a box around items, those are kind of grouped items that as we were prioritizing and moving stuff around, that you got to think of them as kind of moving as a group, all right? So again, in that 200 column, renovations, additions, some site work. And then at the elementary level, we've, we've prioritized kind of some traffic issues at four of our elementary buildings that require not just added parking to improve some traffic flow, but also some different entrances, right? So for instance, at Countryside, there would be a second entrance on Breaker. At Lines, we would snake in the, in the site along kind of the border, the eastern edge of the, of the property that goes along Fox Point, we would route a road that would dump out onto Lake Cook. At North Barrington, we would create a second entry onto Miller Road, right? Now, our facilities committee will be the first one to remind us that those are plans. We still have not really had a serious conversation with villages or IDOCs or the county on, on what it would be required to do that, so that it's still somewhat speculative, but, but it is a priority, it's been a long-time priority of the board to try to address some of these traffic issues on these sites. When you get to the 250 level, you'll see that now we're starting to do a little, a lot more work at the middle schools, with the kitchen cafeteria renovations, fine arts additions, and some classroom additions. And then you'll see at elementary, we begin to start adding space to elementary buildings with the intent to not just provide more space to schools today, try to accommodate perhaps some new growth, but also really trying to make sure that we've got enough space in the district where we can ensure the access to full-day kindergarten, right? It's a, a lot of our, our parents have expressed a lot of satisfaction with the program, right? But unless we've got additional elementary space, it's hard to ensure that that can be a long-term offering for the district. And then in the last column, what you'll see is addressing the middle school space needs with a third middle school. Now, the Prairie and Station renovations that you see there, the $24 and $28 million are intended to kind of get both buildings up to kind of an equitable level to a third middle school. But some of those renovations would be a little bit different than the renovations that you saw in the previous columns, right? You wouldn't build more classrooms at Prairie and Station, right? You're renovating more of the common spaces and that kind of stuff. But the incremental cost, you'll see there is roughly that 73,966, right? So that represents this last column. That's a lot of stuff, right? So I'm going to pause here, we'll talk a little bit in a second about priorities, and we want to get your thoughts on how you react to this. But before we do, let's just give the opportunity for everybody to ask any clarifying questions. Yes?
I know at one point, this is like extremes, because they talk about raising the center of high schools starting from scratch. Do you have any kind of relevance to that?
Uh, we do, I'm trying to remember offhand. Do you guys remember what the estimate was offhand?
I can look.
Online.
Yeah, we'll look at, we'll get that, we'll get that number.
It was a big number.
It's a big number.
I know it's a big number.
Yeah, no, we did, we did it, I just don't remember offhand.
Bigger than more than this sheet.
We'll get that for you. Other clarifying questions?
Brian, when we go out to referendum, are we selecting one of these scenarios and presenting that to the public, or how does that?
The answer would be yes, right? So the way the, the process, the way the referendum process works, right, is the board's role, right, is to kind of decide what the question should be and put it on the ballot, right? And then usually it's a community group who, if there are people who support it, it's a community group. By law, we can't, right? The, the board can only support informational requests, clarify requests. The board doesn't kind of engage in political activity on the referendum. So our kind of role ends when we put the question on the ballot. And I think that the question that we would put on the ballot would be with enough, you know, not just specificity on, on the budget and, and the, and the tax impact, but also what we would use it for, right? Now, I told you a little bit background of the numbers. It's distinctly possible that we may say, you know, here's the number, we're going to use it for this, right? If the numbers, let's say we go out and do the engineering and the bid, and let's say the numbers come in a little bit higher than that, we may have to trim that scope a little bit, right? That's always part of the process. For people that were around before, the swimming pool was on like three referendums, right? Because, you know, it got passed, it was part of the, the scope, right? But then as bids came in higher, something had to not get done, and it was the high school swimming pool. So that got on the next one. So that's always a risk, but we will in the question, specify, try to put the appropriate specifications on what it would be.
So the scope can flex depending on what the approval?
Yeah, because the referendum, the referendum.
Dollar amount is fixed.
The dollar amount is fixed.
Yeah.
The midpoint number for that high school number is probably around $265 million?
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if you put something on the referendum and it doesn't pass, are there any things that you have listed here that have to be done, and would they then come out of whatever the normal operational budget is?
We do have, we, you know, each summer, Penny sits on our facility committee along with board member Joe Ruffalo. They prioritize, we give them a budget, it's roughly about $2.5 to $3 million a year. They can do some of this, for instance, there's some safety and security upgrades we're doing this summer, right? But it, but if you understand $2.5 to $3 million for a million and a half square feet, it doesn't go as far as you think, right? So would we try to get some of these done? Yes. But our ability to get it done in a short period of time would be very limited. Yes?
Brian, just a follow-up to the referendum question. So once these things are specified, there's no way, I mean, they're, they're written, so they're specific enough that you couldn't swap out like, a third middle school shouldn't all, that couldn't all of a sudden appear if the funds were allocated.
That would be our intent, right, to be specific enough. I mean, look, I, I mean, let's, and I, and I think we should all agree, right, that we need to have that specificity on how the money is going to be spent, so that it, it just protects all of them.
Thank you.
I see way in the corner, right?
Um, no, I have a question about where the monies are being spent. When I look at the high school relocating the baseball field and the field parking, lacrosse field parking, et cetera, et cetera, for all, and re-turfing things.
Yep.
I'm just questioning why that seems to be a priority.
That is a great question, right? And here's what I'm going to do.
Over bowls and hallway renovations and middle.
Excellent question. I'm going to give you, we'll, we'll address that question in a second. Before we get into how the priorities are and what your thoughts are on them, who do want to talk about that, I want to just make sure everybody gets a chance to ask clarifying questions on anything.
I have a question. Any of these things that are happening at the high school, are you guys using any of the property over on Hart Road?
Yes, yes. So, so if you looked at the site, the site thing, some of this stuff, there'd be a base in the, in the master plan, there, on the other side of Hart Road, to the north section, there was a, a grass baseball field, and then in the south section, there was a lighted playing field for like lacrosse and soccer and stuff like that, and then some additional parking.
The bridge.
So that is on the other side, and then we talk about a pedestrian bridge that would cross it.
Right, that's what I saw, the bridge, that's why I'm asking.
Right. Yeah, I, I, I have been faulty. I do, if you could just kind of introduce yourself to your friends and neighbors here when you, when you make your comment. I won't ask the other folks to do it, but going forward, let's do that.
Brad Madison, I'm just curious, how are you going to determine which dollar amount you're going to come forward with to the community?
That's why we're here today. We, we have some exercises we're going to do, and we're going to get feedback today towards the end of the meeting on that. Yes?
In the red column on the elementary section at the bottom, where it says sensory therapy rooms, and then the name of your garden classroom, is that something that is at every elementary?
Yes, that's a dollar amount to put that at every elementary.
Adding those to all.
Yes, exactly. Other clarifying questions?
Just a little clarification, where in high school is currently with this occupancy level, you're talking about doing various extensions with the new developments potentially going in, is there a need for a second high school, or will these additions be enough?
Yeah, great question. We, we struggled a little bit with that too. Look, we're at, you know, we're right now at the high school at 28, high 2,800, 2,900, right? When we were, it wasn't that long ago, 2007, 2008, we were over, closer to 3,100. And, and part of the issue we had then is we had fire code issues during lunch periods, right? We're stressing those common areas. Now, there is a lot of flexible space at the high school, and we're talking about some scheduling options, and we're, we're trying to avoid that, but, you know, if we did get a significant growth at the high school, it definitely taxes that, right? Because the decision on two campuses versus one was kind of made in the 90s with those referendum, when they decided to put a bunch of money into the high school, right? Could we do a second high school? We could, but as we just heard, the price tag on that is 250 to 300 million dollars, right? So we could talk about that, but that's, that's really a big shift in where we're from. So what we're trying to do, and you see, you know, we're buying the land around the high school, we're trying to give the footprint of the high school enough room to breathe if it needs to. Some of these additional spaces, we think, do allow for that growth. The caveat should be, I will, I will tell you, because people have asked in previous sessions, our enrollment projections right now are pretty flat at each level. But as we know, there's more rooftops in 220 than there's ever been. So depending on the, you know, the, the real estate market and what happens, we could see an influx of kids, or it could stay flat. It's kind of, it's hard to predict. Uh, yes?
Sorry, I had another question. With the schools where there's traffic concerns, I didn't know, have we ever looked into having police come and direct the traffic like they do at Heinz's, as opposed to?
We do.
Adding new driveways?
We do, we do it at North Barrington.
Okay, well, they don't do it at Countryside, so I know that's on the list.
I know, but it certainly could be.
Yeah, trap every morning.
I know.
So I just didn't know if that was something that they have, you know, if you have to pay the police force to be there, and how those costs compare to actually like building a whole new driveway and the?
It would be cheaper long-term, right, to build. But, but we do, and we've, we've tried to address both Countryside and North Barrington safety issues, but I got, we just haven't gotten very far.
Right.
Other clarifying questions?
Lauren Madison, I didn't hear where the ELC fell in, or if you needed to do any work on the ELC, because you keep mentioning eight elementary schools, is the ELC part of that, and like, do they?
It is for the furniture and fixtures, yeah.
Okay, I didn't know.
And for Level One.
And for Level One, yeah.
And Level One, but safety, security there.
Very minor stuff though.
Okay.
Yeah, thankfully it's a newer building.
So they're falling in that?
They do. When we talk about elementary, that includes the ELC. Yes?
Daisy Conda, I was just wondering, this, in the 250 column, the elementary schools, is that, are those additions and things, the Level Three, Level Four categories on individual elementary school classes?
No.
They don't pour away though?
No, the Level Three and Level, a lot, most of that Level Three, Level Four that was in that.
Right.
Is part of the group of, the group of line items in our master plan that you don't see on there, they didn't make this much.
There's no correlation to those things.
Right. And that may be a question you may ask when we get to priorities.
Okay.
Other clarifying questions?
Katie Elizari, I'm looking at the top square for the high school, the green category. So it's just tricky to understand, because we went from the pie with like the different goals and resources, and then it's like split by building and outside. And to me, it might be easier to understand if it was like the different categories, like the fine, the fine arts, what goes with that, like with the parking, like what connects it together versus the sports. You've got building additions, then you've got grass, turf, parking, 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 parking. And so when you add them up, it's like twice as much money for sports in years, if I'm doing math correctly, and looking at it from that lens.
Yep.
And it's just, you know, hard to understand.
Great, great question, that gets into this priority thing, very similar to the other question was asked, we'll address that in a second. Again, I just want, before we dive into that, that's the heart of the conversation, I just want to make sure people can ask clarifying questions about what's here. Yes?
Eva De Castro, and once, let's say we come up with a number, and it goes to referendum, and then it doesn't pass, do you go to the, can you turn on the lights?
That, that's another conversation for another board, and a part of the community thing, I can't, nobody can predict the future.
So once it's no, then it's not?
It doesn't, it, it doesn't have to be, you can always, you always have the ability to do another referendum. For those that were here in the late 90s, you were doing like a referendum almost every election cycle, right? Something would fail, and then they'd put it on again, but that's, that's a, that's, you have to take each one of those conversations in sequence.
And so, and where is the, the money coming from to pay all these plans back now, or to the referendum?
You mean to play the development of all this?
Yes.
We have a contract with DLR on a consulting basis. It is roughly, I want to say it was $11,000 a month, roughly.
Does that become a loss?
And that's been coming out of our budget.
Does that become a loss at the end of the, of the course?
It becomes an expense, yeah. Yes?
Two questions, guys, Mark. The, the third law school, is that golden price, putting in transportation costing, or is that just?
No, that would come out of our, this is just construction. If, if, if we were, any additional busing costs would be estimated out of our operating budget.
And then is the boundary considered in this?
No, no. Do we, do we know we would need to create a, a different set of boundaries for middle schools? Absolutely. That process hasn't happened yet. Yeah, and way in the back.
For the Spirit Hurry Learning Center, is there going to be a new entry and exit for that school? There's only one going eastbound.
Yeah, that, that would be, that, that would be an ongoing conversation, it's a frustration with us, we've tried to work with I Doc, there's a problem with kind of the way the road is, with the, with the curve, they only gave us that, that one exit only. It is an ongoing thing, that would not be subject to the referendum. Penny would say, and so we'll continue to try to push that and improve that, we just haven't gotten a lot of.
Can I make a clarification?
Yes.
They put a better exit only sign on the exit only of Hurry and Hurry Learning Center, because this year, we had three people who were pulled over by the police officers who went through the exit to get to Prairie Middle School, as opposed to going to Prairie Middle School line. So, we're trying to keep people from going in at the exit sign, and it's not allowed.
Okay, let's, I mean, let's, let's explore that, we'll explore that.
I already know the sign.
Great suggestion. Other clarifying question, Jess?
Yeah, so, just piggybacking on that question, you know, we have the list of, I mean, the police are there every day monitoring traffic, so it seems like that's kind of an urge, that's urgency, so I'm just kind of curious as to how that didn't make the list.
Which one?
Prairie Middle School, police are there.
It's there.
Fourth, 250.
Yeah, we got a million and a half in there for reworking existing drop off.
Why it's not closer?
Why it's not higher? That's a good question, hold on to that.
Why it's not with the lines and the other ones that, you know?
Good question, if I ask you, just hold on to that.
And my other question was with the elementary schools, because you know, there's the news, there's a lot of projecting of new growth, and, you know, initially we talked about it at the additional elementary school, and so how that got?
We'll, 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 we'll try to get to that. Other clarifying questions? Not on priorities, but clarif, yes.
Looking at a referendum history over the past, it looked like most of the stuff that was done was chopped into smaller, more into a, over time, is that the intention that persists?
Let's have that conversation at the end, hopefully remember to have that conversation. There's no decision made. We'll hear, yes?
I noticed there's kitchen and cafeteria renovation happening at the middle schools and elementary schools, I also see this for that high school, are we not?
Yeah, it wa, it wa, it was, it's some of it, I mean, you want to answer that, I mean, some of it is embedded in here, but it's not in nearly as bad a shape, right? The issue we have at both the middle and the high school, remember, we cook everything at the, at the high school now and we send it out. The, the idea here was to improve not just the food quality by giving them some more cooking facilities at the building, but also to renovate the cafeteria spaces so that the logistics of moving the kids through are better. That issue doesn't happen as much at the high school as it does with the middle and the elementary. Couple more, and then I want to move into the priority conversation. Yes?
Katie Elizari, maybe I'm just not seeing it, or it's like on the website, but, in the early processes, it seemed there were schools that were more deficient or less deficient or had different issues, and Sunny Hill seemed to be the old, one of the older buildings that was the least modern. Is that, the renovations and upgrades for that, are they wrapped into the first box square for upgrades to the high school?
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of that renovation would be in the level one for Sunny Hill, that was a bigger number at Sunny Hill like it is for a lot of our older buildings. The board did talk about the idea of new buildings at both Sunny Hill and Huff, right? But again, in prioritizing onto, onto the sheet, it's in that bucket, it's not on the sheet, for new buildings. But the renovations, that would be required on level one.
To bring it up to the other level.
Yes.
Yeah, isn't that elementary number, that quite a bit of that is in a handful of buildings, if you look on, on the detail.
Where is the detail on elementarys? The web?
Yeah, it is. Grove, Sunny Hill, Huff, those are the three oldest buildings.
I mean, at one hit.
Where do you find those details then, if you want to see what the specifics are for the elementarys? Is it on the website?
It's on the website, go to Barrington 220, go to Blueprint 220, right? And then, there's a, there's a, and I don't know if we can get it up there, but there's a, a table that lists each, I think there's a tab, this is like site concepts or something, and it lists each building, you click on the building, and it gives you all the detail.
So is that all true in the red column? Like in the sensory therapy and the kindergarten?
Yep, yeah, you'll, you'll ask, you'll see where they were, conceptually where they're planned in each building, the location. Other clarifying questions? Okay, let's start talking about priorities, and I'm gonna go back to, who was over there that asked that question? Yeah, did they, she's not allowed. So, so look, I think the question that kind of she was asking, and I think, I can't remember who asked it over here, was it Lian, did you ask? But somebody asked a question about athletics, right? So we've heard this before, right, because people are saying, it seems like you're prioritizing some of the athletics over.
Fine arts.
Or, or fine arts or, or learning spaces, right? So, at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to some of my trusted colleagues, you guys want to comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think that the board has had very robust discussions concerning this, and not everyone is in agreement, and not everyone is completely in disagreement either. Brian put together a nice chart where we kind of, you know, every single line item, you know, do you, do you consider this to be first, second, third, or fifth priority? And, you know, then he took kind of an average, and from that created this chart. As far as our discussions, you know, I, I think that all of the conversations that I've heard throughout this room have been recited by one or more board members in our discussions as well. And, you know, to Brian's point, I think that we, you know, kind of are talking around each other at this point, like, well, I think this, well, I think this, and we really wanted to get a nice community discussion to figure out, you know, is, is where this landed a good concept as far as where we're prioritizing, or should we be looking more at learning spaces and mobiles and, you know, as a priority? You know, what, so that's, that was kind of the basis for wanting to have these three community meetings.
So I'll, I'll jump in on the site work at the high school, though. If you'll notice, you know, there's a fine arts center, there's PE additions, in my mind, utilizing that space on the other side of Hart Road was necessary in order to make room for expansion at the high school. If we were to put on those building additions for the PE, the PE wellness addition, fine arts addition, it makes the site so crowded that it makes driving around the site difficult, driving around the sites difficult today, if you've ever been at the high school. And so, to me, we sort of had to free up some space in order to do some of those additions that do impact the academic day.
One, 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 just additional layer on that. We get, as a board, throughout the years, we've been approached by the area youth groups, the athletic groups, the fine arts groups, right? And they all have needs, right? Since we, you know, we, our facilities are not adequate, blah, 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 right? And we've said, look, we just don't have the dollars, right? But we'll have this community conversation where we're ready to think about the next major capital infusion, which is where we are now, right? And, and look, when we think about some of the fine arts facilities, obviously, you know, they, they double as both, not just for fine arts instruction, but they're also used for a lot of large group instruction. Bridget will tell you that, like, just our, our high school auditorium gets put down 1,100 times a year, right? And it's not just all fine arts stuff, it's your people, for academic purposes, large group settings, youth, our community groups use it. The same with, with, with a lot of the athletic fields, right? You know, whether it's BASSA, Barrington area youth baseball and softball, you know, or all the other athletic groups, they all see a value. And I will tell you, we try to keep our buildings, we're, I think, proud of the fact that all of our buildings are community buildings that are used not by the students during the day, but students and community groups all the time. The high school is used 24/7, it seems like, right? So, so that's some of the priority I think you saw, I mean, I know in the board conversation, there's clearly a priority here for the high school, right? Part of the, the conversation was every kid in the district ends up at the high school, right? So that seemed like a logical starting point. That said, that's why we're here today, right? Now, I'm gonna transition a little bit to the envelope, just so you guys can take notes. If you haven't opened your envelope, there should be some sticky notes in there, right? And, the concept of the sticky notes is for you to write some of your conversations or your thoughts as we're going through this conversation, on those, and then we're gonna take a break in a little bit, and we're gonna give you the opportunity to put, put your comments on the different buckets, right? So, if you have the comments saying, boy, there's not an, I, I disagree with the focus on the ball fields or the athletic fields at the high school, and I'd rather see this, you can jot it down, and you have the ability to put it there, and then we're gonna capture all those.
But you only want some of the capital expenditure kind of stuff?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, now, yeah, if it's a programmatic thing or an operational, we can, happy to answer those questions after, but you're right, today the focus is on the capital.
Penny, sorry, I just had a clarifying question, because you were talking about like the site work and the renovations at the high school impacting the academic day, and I don't really understand how the athletics and fine arts affects the academic areas.
The, like, we have one auditorium right now, and it's used 1,100 times a year, something like that. And we did, I was on the core team, and so we visited some other high schools, we had teachers on our team committee as well. Now, as a high school teacher, that said, we have no place in our, in our school where we can have lectures to more than one class. They don't have bigger spaces like that. So, the auditorium is more than just performance space, it's instructional space as well. The dance room, that's a class. So there are academic classes that students take that would be impacted by the fine arts addition. And then if you look PE additions, every student takes PE in our, in our district in some shape or form. It's not PE like we remember, there are, we're trying to have health and wellness, it's, you know, trend, so we need spaces that have bicycles, you know, like more health club like spaces, we need classrooms where a health class can be taught, we need a weight room, things like that, that are part of the academic day for every student that attends the high school. So, I felt it important to differentiate PE from athletics, per se. I will say, though, that one thing that we saw after we made the, after we partnered with the principal stadium to have a turf at the high school football stadium, that is used by PE classes far more than it ever was when it was just grass, because the grass then was preserved for the athletic teams, and PE wasn't utilizing it. Zip. Great understanding.
Great.
Yes.
One of the things in the last, in Prairie 220 meetings, like the beginning, when they broke out, that was like the primary school was like a PE? And, and the instructors were saying that the last round renovations, they actually lost a lot of the campus space. They lost a gym, is that, were they, they got, it was not a new gym, but they, they used to have two.
The individual spaces? So, if I remember, so I went to the PE one, or the athletic one, I'll say. So athletics, our athletic programs have expanded, but our spaces actually shrunk with the last renovation. I don't remember exactly where, but.
Into science.
Oh, yes, into science labs, thank you.
So I thought that was interesting, because now it's like we're trying to counterbalance 220 left, that way, the foundation needs to expand, move those fields and the footprint can expand to NDA.
Right, and even, you know, PE 20 years ago is different than it was now, it was far, I mean, when I was in high school and I knew PE, you know, you played dodgeball and, you know, it's different now, it's different now. So if you have the individual spaces, is important.
We do a lot of music carry classes, and we do a lot of key boarding classes for music and.
In fine art.
Yeah, so it's not just.
With the footprint, are we gaining or losing parking spots at the high school?
Yeah, well, yes and no. So here, since there's so much, this is, right, this is the site plan, right, then you can get this on the web, right? So this was the site plan for the high school, right? So you'll see, right, this is the proposed fine arts addition, and then there's kind of a new entryway, and we would kind of, we, we would end up kind of consolidating a lot of the student resource activities into kind of a new center, which the students are actually pretty excited about, right? There's some additions in the back, right, that's a PE and wellness addition, that's a fitness addition. So you see, we're increasing the footprint a little bit. But when we do this, we are losing some space here, right? And when we move the, we would relocate the tennis courts, right? So, so we're losing a little bit here, but remember, lacrosse, we would, we would talk about adding some parking here, this is lacrosse, soccer, football, this would be a light, right? On the other side, that's the grass football field, right? And then, really, we're turfing this, we take one more turf field up here, you got some parking here, and then we would add some more parking up here also, right? And then traffic flow, for those who have gone to the high school and have had to kind of circumnavigate the building to get out, right? Now you'd be able to come in, out, and then go back out. So there's a loop here that would be a really easy drop off.
That's good.
And then you also have kind of a road here if you want to go off to Hart Road. And remember, Hart Road's gonna be renovated here, hopefully in the next couple of years to improve its coverage.
So that's kind of like how it originally was, the Dallas?
Yeah.
Just like.
Well, and the tennis courts are moving.
It had a circle drive in the front, it was a.
Because you could drive. Always worked.
It was a big circle.
You know, it, it was interesting, we looked at the high school, DLR had an interesting graphic, you see, they had a president's face on each, like, they shaded the additions to the high school, and they had a president's face on each color, and there's probably five presidents for the additions in the high school.
There was another question earlier about priorities, and I think it was, and that was, it was the new elementary building, is that the question? I can't remember, I think it was somebody else.
It was a question about why?
So, yeah, we talked about the additional space, if I understand, if I remember the question, right, who asked the question about the, okay, it was about the third, about whether or not to do the other elementary building, right? Any board members want to respond to that?
I, I would say that it, in terms of priority, I think that there are just things that were a bit ahead of it right now, based on our moment, we thought that by, I think, well, I thought that by getting the kindergarten classrooms competitive flexibility, our conversations with our architects, I think they figured out, something good is that, because he can, just because it's not out here doesn't mean that it can't be done in some time, as a result of the moment's growth. But at this time, because our moment is flat, you know, it just isn't possible. That was me.
I just had a question in general, I know.
Shouldn't this be written?
Sorry, that's Amy Turner. Previously, in an earlier meeting, it was talked about costs of like the auditorium thing, that they, it's definitely needed, but when they compared like the cost of what the Lake Zurich Center costs and things like that, it looked like we were aiming for the trend of a price versus, you know, kind of going average additional space, things like that. Is this kind of, I mean, that lens applied to everything, is this just brings us up to average? Is this above average?
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same question.
You know, I mean, are we going for like time fitness, or are we, you know?
I, do you want to? Well, I think what we've been assured is that we're not, we're not having received expensive, okay? But we're probably not having my high school power, but either, you know what I mean? It's gonna be something that will sustain us for about 50 to 75 years in terms of construction, and that would be right there.
And there certainly, there would always be the opportunity for booster groups, for instance, for fine arts, if they wanted to raise money to upgrade things, like to get a nicer sound system or whatever, the idea was to try to come up with just a baseline. Now, the other thing I'll tell you is, once we decide in this process, right, kind of some focus areas, right? If this is one of the areas that kind of we think we're gonna focus on, we will task, you know, DLR and Pepper to try to drive down and get a little bit more precise number, right, along those lines. So it's a good question, the board's intent is to kind of, like we did with the Community Stadium, saying, saying the taxpayers will fund kind of a midline facility, and if, if And if, if the community wants to raise money to make it nicer, that would be an opportunity.
I could say too, I, you brought up Lake Zurich Auditorium and that's a great thing. We toured Lake Zurich Auditorium and we spoke with their, their person in charge of the facility maintaining it and we're not building it at the same time. And I think that a conversation about what type of seat they need, I mean, all of that, all of those things can make a difference. We also toured Mootreer, much different facility, and we're publishing some rooms closer to Lake Zurich.
Yep.
I'm just not seeing the parking here, so...
Meaning, meaning you're not seeing what, additional parking?
I mean, I see, we have like the corner on the right and then where else is the parking? Right, so I see a parking across here.
Well, look, here's what I'm going to tell you, park, first of all, here, first of all, I'll ask you a question, right? Where is parking? There's parking here, there's parking here, there's parking here, there's parking here, and there's parking here.
If I go to the, I mean, event at the Fine Arts View, where are they parking? Where are the people parking?
They, they were probably parking here, hopefully. But look, now, the other thing, by the way, we picked up about another 90 spots, right? We closed the other day, you know, on this building right here, right, the gateway.
The across the street.
And there's some parking behind there.
But I thought in meeting, I thought that there wouldn't be student parking in the...
No, not student, but for, for events.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm looking for students.
So, here's what I'm going to say. So, look, there is, in one of the plans, there was a parking garage that's not there. It didn't make, it didn't make it. Here's what I'm going to tell you, and this is the thing, there's never enough parking, right? Now, we have done surveys, right? We have more parking spots than almost every other high school on, but it's still not enough. I can't...
If you never get to pay for a parking spot offsite, you know, I mean...
I understand. I understand. I, I, we love, we would love to be able to have parking offered to Jews.
The parking garage is on there, but that didn't, it's...
It didn't make it.
Right there, there it is. So, that would go up. It's a red box, right there. It would go up.
It didn't make the list. But again, if, if that's something that you think is a high priority, put it on a card and put it up.
Well, anybody who's ever come to like the elementary school and stuff like that, you almost have to be lost in it.
I, I, you do. We have those little trolleys that we run, right?
Right, so...
Yes.
Okay, when I say that we're in aspect, clarify if my information is incorrect. So, the mobiles have either gotten to their expiration date or they're beyond their expiration date. So, let's say that they didn't make it in. What is the plan to take care of those? Like, do we need new mobiles then? Like, I...
If we were going to go, I mean, I think they're, what, they're 12 years old now?
Yeah.
Then we, what, so on our facilities, like three year, let's, let's, we need new groups, new models. We've been maintaining them all along. We've been helping them all along. Maybe some employing, they've got air stuff going on, you know? We've been maintaining them all along, but they can be higher groups, which are...
And at some point, look, if we don't, in this process, address that issue, what we may have to just do is take some of the summer project money we have and just buy new mobiles together.
Okay, so I just want to, let me, so they didn't make it in there. I mean, it's not like, I mean, they're...
We got to figure it out. Mobiles can't last forever.
It was supposed to be a 10-year project, okay?
Yes.
Hi, there, please, if you're a student, I have students at the elementary school, middle school, and high school.
Yeah, congratulations.
Yeah, so this is, okay, I have a question. And at the, the presentation, I went to the fall, which is at the high school, which was great. We talked about future-ready learning spaces. There was a big emphasis on future-ready learning spaces. And later I went to a different tour, which was wonderful, which I don't know if any of you went to it. We saw a regular classroom, a classroom with some modifications. Then we saw the classroom, computerized classrooms, the business incubator.
Yeah.
So, under, on the 200 million renovations, it says future-ready classroom renovation, which I'm disappointed, it's in the second tier, but I understand. It might cost some money, but I see it's only $10 million. I'm just, I'm confused. I thought the emphasis was on these future-ready spaces that recognize the need for, for the space, for the lacrosse fields and whatnot, and the auditorium. So, I, my question is two-fold. The priority, fine, but the second, my real question is, what does that mean to you, future-ready learning spaces? I saw different degrees of future-ready learning, so...
So, I may, I'm going to answer first the question of priorities, because this is good for probably a lot of people, like who would say, oh, I'm disappointed, I mean, I'll just take your, I'm disappointed that the future-ready classroom renovation made it, you know, in the 200 column, not the 150, right? As Angela pointed out, when we surveyed the board and came up with priorities, and this kind of reflects that, we've moved stuff around a little bit. This kind of reflects it. The difference in terms of board rating of priority between the green column and the blue column was miniscule, right? But you got to draw the line somewhere, right? So, that's why this is a draft and that's why we're having this conversation to understand how we're going to shuffle it up next, right? So, if that is a big priority, right, that's the kind of thing, you know, you, you, you would put it maybe on the green column and say, I would, I need to see future-ready learning at the high school prioritized here. That's the kind of thing we're looking for. Now, hold on. Now, you asked the second question about what exactly does that mean? And I'm going to ask Dr. Harris to try to...
Well, I think there's a couple answers to that, you know? First of all, what you've seen, what you just described, like at Barrington High School, I assume you toured and saw different rooms in the building, is that correct? You know, furniture fixtures and equipment, that's a significant piece of that. What you saw was basically what we've done. We've, we've either modified some of the classroom space, we've got different furniture, we've got a different structure in those spaces, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what we're talking about. When you see in that, in that, underneath the green column here in each one of those, where you've got, for instance, at the high school, you've got all four and a half million dollars to basically get the rest of that building into similar fashion, because we believe that, the educators believe that'll have a significant impact on what's going on instructionally. You know, let me give you an example at the elementary level. When DLR did their building assessment, it was at the Rosin first grade classroom. The students spent 80% of the day, this can, they hired, not in the, using the furniture. In fact, the furniture was in the way. It was impeding instruction, what the teacher was trying to do in that space. That's just a one example. But I know that happens each and every day in our classrooms across the district. So, that was the, why you'll see that as a higher priority. We believe that could have an immediate impact on instruction and what we're trying to do in our classrooms.
No, I see that here. So, that's kind of, that's kind of his future ready in his own way, right, the 4.5 in the first column?
Correct.
Okay.
Can I just add one other thing to, so Brian made a great point as far as, you know, some of the back and forth that we've had at the board table is between these two columns, this green column and this blue column. And I think it's been frequent where someone has said, this is really important, this should be in the green column. And Brian's response will be, what do you want to take out? So, we all have our ideas about what to take out. That is where this gets, you know, a little, there's, there's some conflict here as far as what, are we, are we truly representing what the community wants? Because if you're going to make these buckets, you know, as far as what this, you know, what this new renovation should be, there has to be, you, you can either have everything, if you want that, or if you, you know, want a certain price range, you have to be cognizant of what you think is not important. Keeping in mind that some of these things do go hand in hand. So, you know, when you're giving us your feedback, if you can provide that as well, I think we've heard each other's points of view a lot, but I, I am very curious and very excited to hear what, what you think is, is important and maybe isn't as important.
So, I guess, why did you even, why did you create this structure between, I mean, you know, we had a $19 back on our taxes versus 192? One, I mean, it's kind of like chicken and egg. It's like, we don't need additional parking on the other side of Hart Road if we don't have the auditorium. Like, I mean...
Well, you do have the new fine arts.
You find, you find too, there's so much where you really can't have one without the other. So, it's like, why is that called, why is there even that differentiation?
Well, in this case, and that's fair, remember, the fine, the new fine arts center is in there, right?
In the third column?
No, in the second column, okay, right? There's a second one, which is the renovation of the existing auditorium into smaller, uh, fine arts and large group instruction spaces, right? And, and you'll get razor-thin difference, right? And, but look, and I will tell you, when we did this, every board member, when we had to live within a budget, every board member had the exact same quote coming back. This is hard. So, it is. So, these are somewhat arbitrary, right? And we're, this conversation is to try to figure out how, what the next round of reshuffling might, how that might, you know, what input we're going to get on that.
Brian, can I ask one question? This is a draft, right? So, are these columns, the amounts, these are also something that we could adjust?
Yeah, you could change. We could end up saying, you know, based on what people say, maybe we come back and there's a, a, a different number in between. These are totally arbitrary to structure the conversation. We, we may come up with different, in the next iteration, we may come up with some different numbers, right?
Right, they're, they're round numbers. And, you know, we tried to kind of have a, a break even point, you know, as far as, so that's, you know, that was our goal at the beginning, but then, you know, as you see, it goes less and more.
I saw a hand back there.
Hi, first of all, I...
Get your name again, introduce yourself.
Sure, Ed Fans, who I live in, in Westwood. Uh, first of all, this hasn't been said yet, but I, I think it's important to note, you know, just thank you. I appreciate all the thoughtful work that's gone into this and I recognize that, you know, those on the board are volunteers. So, thank you very much for all the, all the time and thoughtless that's gone into this. But just a philosophical question relative to the amount of investment at the, at the elementary level, you know, compared to the high school level, the middle school level. Just using the, the, the blue column for purpose of example, I'm seeing about $50 million of investment at the elementary level and about 150 at, at the other two levels, it's about a quarter. Just, if you could just talk a little bit about the philosophy there and, you know, that, you know, just from a building standpoint, you know, the elementary, that's 10 buildings, is that right?
Nine.
Okay, and only 25 or 6% of the overall investment. Talk about the philosophy there of investing at the elementary versus the high school and middle school.
I, I would just say, some of our newest buildings are at the elementary level, so that's part of that. I mean, five of nine of those buildings are the newest buildings in the district.
Don't need much work at all.
Not as much as the others. You know, I mean, that's not to say that the 20-year-old building doesn't need maybe something, right? So, I think that's why you might see some of that difference. But in some cases, these are lumpy things. And so, when we created these buckets, we had, we struggled with how, they filled up much faster than we thought they would. And so, that's why we're, I mean, that's the truth, right? 10 pounds in a 5-pound bag, you know? And so, that's why, that's why we're here talking to you to figure out, what do you think?
Definitely the age of the facility weighed in. Penny's spot on on that, you know? Five of the nine, you know, or 20 years or under. And so, that's not the case then with, like, the high school, the core of the high school's 19, it's one of the oldest, 1948. So, like the Fine Arts Center, 1948 vintage seats in there, right? And so, that is an example. And I think, you know, like Sunny Hill, $6 million in Level 1. It's the highest building outside of the high school in Level 1 because it's sign, it's tired, big time tired. It needs attention. So, it's just, you know, and that's where you see that playing out if you look at the detail.
And I'll, I'll add, I'll add kind of one more comment to that. If, I mean, look, the way you think of facilities and building has changed a lot over the years. I mean, look, I'm not going, I'm, I'm going to make a statement. I have meaning to imply that our schools are inadequate because I think our schools are good, right? But if you were to build a brand-new elementary based on the current thinking, right? You're going to have over $300 or 300 square feet per kid, right? Today, we only have like 150 in our schools, right? Our schools were built with a different model, right? Now, that said, where you see the biggest difference is as you start getting in the middle of high school, right? The current thinking on teaching and the amount of square feet per kid, it's a bigger disconnect at our high school and middle school levels than it is our elementary. Also, talking to elementary teachers, they do want flexible spaces, right? They need it. But they don't necessarily need kind of, you know, some of the specialized additions that you talk about at the middle and high school level, right? So, I think that, you know, part of the focus you see here is trying to make sure we're giving elementary teachers enough money to invest in, in their classroom space and do some, you know, minor restructuring in their buildings. But then when you start looking at some of the middle school and high school space, they're bigger spends, they're bigger dollars, right? And, and maybe more impactful, right? But it, it, it is a harder, I mean, we struggle with it.
That's a great answer, first of all.
Um, in the back, identify yourself.
I'm in, I'm in, um, we had a great meeting with Dr. Phillips in the fall to talk about the sensory therapy rooms that we have in every school. 20% of our kids here have IEDs. This is a huge change. Most sports are looking at that. How did it drop, from, at that point was that, from the level B, how did it drop from B all the way down to C?
Okay, so let me just explain the difference between the level drawings and this, okay? So, the level drawings were put together by the, by the core team based on feedback that we had, you know, from the community, people who, in the community who interacted with us. And so, those drawings built on one another. So, Level 2 included Level 1, Level 3 included Level 3. We looked at those items that were identified more as a menu than a progression. Does that make sense? And so, I would say that, how did it end up in this column? My guess is it was very close to being in, in another column. As Brian said, I walked in, the razor-thin difference. It's just a matter of how much can I put in one column? So, if that's something you feel really strongly about, let us know that.
Yeah, put it up there.
Because we found value in it too, but it's just, the way you sliced it, it jumped around a little bit.
Yeah, I'll, I'll re, I'll say it again. This is not a reflection of perceived value on any of these. It's a perception of trying to balance budgetary needs with everything else. It's hard.
I know, sorry, I keep talking. It's a little...
I just wanted to make sure I get to...
So, I, I have kids in the high school, middle school, and elementary school also. And I'm just looking at the green column and I'm, so I don't have any kids that are in sports other than gym. So, I, I'm just trying to understand from the pers, your perspective, like, why this is important. And so, I, I understand this a little bit, but when it comes to priorities, I think it might help to talk about it a little bit. Because it seems like everything that falls into the classroom and academics and how we learn sort of is in the less important priority. And I understand, we talked about the auditorium and the arts, but I don't know how we compare sports-wise versus other similar districts. And I know that PE is different now than when, like, I was a kid, but it also sounds like I need to go out and buy new gym clothes because I'm going to start working out. Like, why can't we just kind of continue where we're at as far as like gym and athletics and healthy thinking when all you really need to do is go walk or run outside on the track? So, I'm just trying to understand, just, maybe if other people feel like we do, I don't know.
Something that might help us understand that, I think, a little better, maybe, who's our DLR?
Kristen.
Maybe Kristen can help on this. Are there links between the, the items in the green and blue columns where we would have to do, or it makes more sense to do something in the green column so that we can then do something in the blue column? There's some efficiencies when it comes to actually making changes. I'm not at the curve on every link between the items in both of those columns, but I think there are some. Dr. Harris mentioned the furniture in the green column. That's part of the future-ready classroom renovation or learning, which is in the blue column. So, we may not get the money to do all of this. So, you know, a little more information about some of those links might be helpful.
Yeah, I, I think you, you hit it on the head with the future-ready learning. So, you know, the, I know that the board was really trying to figure out a way to immediately affect the learning environments of students through using that, the furniture and upgrading the furniture. So, you have more flexible classrooms without hitting the walls or, you know, like putting in applicable partitions if they're not already there. But the, the Fine Arts Center, if you add a new Fine Arts Center, that could be used for more than just the arts. The existing auditorium could then also become another learning space. So, now, as opposed to having one facility for 1,100 events, you now have two facilities for 1,100 different things. So, I think that's, those are some links.
Yes.
So, the question though is as far as athletics, though.
Well, but, so, just that. So, I, I think that the priority that you see reflected here, and, and again, it, it, the reason we're having this conversation is because you can re, you can really disagree with it. Matter of fact, there's plenty of us that challenge this, right? But, but look, we believe that the first priorities, right, are the, for us as a community, should be one, taking care of the buildings that we have today. We have a big investment in buildings. We've got to properly maintain them. That's the Level 1. Safety and security of the students is much different today than it was 20 years ago. We have to address that, right? Giving teachers at all of our buildings the ability to have furniture and fixtures that can change the delivery model of education today was a high priority, which is why you see a furniture and fixtures prioritize kind of next, right, in, in, in those levels. Now, we know we don't have enough money to make big structural changes in all of our buildings, right? But we felt this was the most cost-effective way to impact the learning environment, right? And then, as Kristen pointed out, a lot of the fine arts spaces are, are really kind of also kind of double as large group instruction spaces because we don't think we've got within the scope of what we think a reasonable budget is to be able to create large group instruction spaces separate from that. So, we're going to think about how, how we're going to have to double use it, right? And then, I think that there's a really strong argument for a lot of people to say, hey, I want to eliminate the mobile classrooms at the middle schools before I do some of the... before I do some of the site work, right? I get that, right? The numbers don't totally match up, but that's not a realistic thing. So, but I think the athletic focus is not necessarily an athletic focus as much as it is a focus on the high school site, right? Because the high school site, as somebody pointed out, we've made the community decision, we have a single high school. It's landlocked. We got the ability to expand it a little bit, which will give us flexibility to expand the high school if we have to. But it's really more of a focus on the high school and the high school site than it is necessarily athletic spaces, right? But at some point, the site development kind of all does kind of get intertwined. But that's why we're here today, to hear this kind of stuff, yes.
Mr. Castro, so does Level One take care of any of the mold issues in the building?
Yes, it's all that kind of structural stuff. And if there is mold issues, we need to take care of it now. We don't have to do that.
We have not been aware that there are any mold issues in the building. They do air quality testing.
Yeah, we do air testing and all that. If one ever comes up, we deal with it right away.
So I'm new to the district, and I guess I have, that there's eight buildings in it. I don't know if that's true, but. Eight buildings that would have some kind of mold, and I don't know that.
We haven't heard that, so if you can.
Not to my knowledge.
Whoever has said that, if they.
Maybe over the last twenty years, that's all been remediated, dealt with.
Was one countryside was rebuilt? There were mold in the library doors.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Not a good thing, not a good thing.
So you're saying right now there's no mold.
Zero.
And I don't know where asbestos is, right?
Zero.
I'm not sure how we're supposed to.
There might be some asbestos in some of the old buildings.
If we were, what are we doing?
Disturb it, right? And if we have remediated, if we ever do anything.
And I would just say, if our facilities staff becomes aware of a mold or air quality issue, they do test it immediately and they remediate immediately. And there was a suspicion, there was a concern that the air quality in a classroom was poor last year. The next day, there was.
Including the mobiles?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was right here, it was the station, it was right here.
Yes.
Okay, I have a question.
Introduce yourself to your friends and neighbors.
I'm Gloria Peterson. I'm an empty nester, my kids went to North Barrington Prairie and Barrington High School. But twenty years ago, when we passed those referendums, we got rid of the mobile units. On purpose, because these kids were going out in the winter. It's very uncomfortable. And here we are, like, ten mobile units. So if we built a third middle school, then we don't have to build these mobile units. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And we can, when we're to go in this floor shuffle, we can shuffle our suggestions.
Yeah.
There's also the renovations planned at both of the middle schools that were the mobiles as well. So let's.
You don't have to build a third middle school.
To eliminate the mobiles.
Yeah, yeah.
At front, just throughout the whole process with DLR, was there a competitive analysis done with like schools in this district? I know you went to Joplin, I know you went to all those new fancy schools. But do we look at a nutria, do we look at, you know, whatever?
The answer is yes. I'll let, I know Penny went on, so I'll just leave a comment on that.
But is it public, like, has it been documented? And is there a document we could all look at? Because I think that would be helpful to see if there's a like spend per student on athletics, at nutria, or whatever.
Well, it depends what you want to measure. It depends what you want to compare.
Do you look at it all on a competitive scale?
Well, the school report card, the state school report card, we'd be able to tell you, compare the price spent per student. It doesn't break it down to by subject, yeah, okay? But what we looked at, what DLR did, and if you remember back in the initial phase, we had those big glossy colorful sheets of paper. We compared the analysis of that school versus what sort of the standard was at this time. And so it was done against kind of a standard as opposed to a particular building. Kristen, you did the work. I mean, when you compared our facilities, what were you betragging against?
So it was based on the 2015 annual school construction report, which talks about, what we really looked at was the gross square footage per student. We've done that at several districts. They provide a national law quartile, national median, national high quartile. I believe we compared Barrington to the median, done it differently at other districts. But that tells you how approximately, if you were to build a new school in 2015 at the time, I believe they publish the report every five years, which is why we're using 2015. But if you, if you were to build a new school today, you would use what, either the low quartile, so I think the medians are a hundred and eighty gross square feet per student for elementaries. I believe, if anyone's really interested in that, it's 2015 annual construction report. And two hundred for middle schools approximately.
So there's a report for every single building?
I'm looking for the snapshot, you know, we know what.
Oh, sorry.
So I mean, I think it might be helpful if you're to advance this conversation, if it comes back to being a gray area, is looking at like schools in Illinois that say a facility, you know, the average age of the X facility at Nutria, if we're gonna use them as a friendly competitor, or whoever.
We can do that.
Is nineteen years old and has X, Y, and Z.
Yeah, and fine arts and athletic.
When you were talking about.
I mean, it's kind of an analysis. Yeah, no, 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 but you know, kind of if you were to do a deep dive into competitive analysis, that might be helpful.
Yeah, we've done a limited amount, both fine arts and sports, kind of did some competitive, and they went out and looked at different things and they compared it. But maybe a little bit more complete and formal, and I kind of like that idea. Let's try to work on that.
I misunderstood, sorry.
I saw a new hand over there.
Thank you.
Not you?
I'm Sunny Hill, and I have kids at the middle school level. There were two kind of background questions. There was this development that was proposed in the conference states that's contested. If you guys could just speak to that, I don't know where that landed.
We can, so that's one question, one second.
Second question, another big picture question, is factored in like projections of the property taxes into the future with Illinois and all of its pension prices and so on and so forth. Do you see them rising in general?
Right, so I'm gonna give you quick answers to both, right? So on the first one with Plum Farms, the residents across the street, across 59 filed a lawsuit challenging the zoning, right? We, as Barrington 220, joined that. We intervened and joined them in that lawsuit. That was allowed. The lawsuit itself is still sitting kind of in limbo. There was a, as you can imagine, the developer issued a, you know, kind of a motion to dismiss the lawsuit. That has just been continued, continued, the judge has not ruled on that. So that's been kind of a legal limbo status right now, for best I can tell you. There's another development that you may have read about in the paper, about a developer going into the AT&T site and doing a redevelopment. You know, that, we, the trick there is on the property tax treatment. That might be really beneficial to us, right? Depending on how that happens, we're trying to seek out a little bit more information on that. And then regarding property tax forecasting and all that, yes, but that's all on the operating side of our budget, right? As taxpayers, your tax bill, when you get it from the district, is really comprised of two calculations, right? One is an operating tax rate, which funds all of our annual expenses, right? And then the other is the servicing on these bonds, right? So there are kind of two components that go into making up your tax bill. The property tax receipts we get, right? We forecast those on the operating side of our budget, right? So that's all. It's a little bit different than this capital budget, right? So what happens is there's an operating rate, right? We look at the operating dollars, and that gets divided up among all of our EAV, right? And then there's the servicing of bonds. That then gets divided, so there's two calculations. This is just that bond portion that we're talking about.
It's two buckets, but I interfere the taxpayer. And it's so capitalized.
Right, as a, so as a general rule, as a general rule, right, in Illinois, our revenues are capped by the property tax cap law. So typically, our operating revenue goes up by CPI. It's constrained by CPI. Your tax bill depends on how your individual property goes up or down relative to your neighbors, right? So if you go down relative to your neighbors, you're gonna pay a little bit less. If you go up, you're gonna pay a little bit more. That's kind of how it works. Illinois doesn't do, the system is used in some states where you just set a rate, and then that gets applied to your property. It works a little bit different. Unfortunately, it's more complicated. Happy to dive into that a little bit more if you want after the meeting.
I would just say one more thing. The stuff going on at the state, while it definitely will impact all of us, no matter what they do, the school portion of that is controlled locally. The school portion of your tax bill. Does it make sense?
But if you pass a referendum, it's an additional line on your tax bill.
It's not an additional line, but it becomes, why, at least not a book count.
Right, it becomes part of your rate.
And then there is no end to that, correct?
No.
With the referendum, or is there?
It'll be a twenty, these are bonds, right? So that's why, the reason we're here is the old twenty-year bonds are coming off, right? So, so look, the law's pretty simple, right? For big projects like this, we need to have voter approval. Schools need to have voter approval to issue capital bonds. They can go up to twenty years, but they, it can't be indefinite. Which is why we're having this conversation, it's a good law.
And have you ever considered doing ones that aren't twenty years, like?
We could.
Okay.
Like, we could, we could do, we could take a smaller number and do it for twenty. We could take a number and do twenty, but then it obviously compresses the time you're paying it off. Yes, sir.
You fifteen or thirty, or whatever, ten?
I was part of the group that brought the last big successful bond issue to fruition here back in November. In that, we had to do a lot of issues. We tried complete work, it wasn't successful, the nineteen ninety-eight bond issue. Their main, their main bond issue failed because some people thought because of lack of candor, transparency, and things like that. Yours is successful, it's just the one that brought the countryside school, Roswell, youth school, many of the other changes off. It's just the big bond issue that went off. And I think it's really important to reflect on how, it's easy to say, why are things, you know, in a red column and ought to be in a green column? Why isn't my thing here? Part of the focus that you're trying to give to us is, once you get shifted around, what is the community thinking? But there's a, there is a cost issue here. And the reason our bond issue was successful back twenty years ago was that we were really clear about the need. The countryside was full of mold and had like seven different levels. The handicapped folks couldn't go there. And there was huge, obvious needs. There was, there were capacity issues in the district that had to be fixed. You know, there weren't just ten, there weren't just ten mobile units. We have, they were like, let's deal with them. And so it was really clear what was needed versus what would be desired or nice to have. And so as the board thinks about this, and as the community, we think about these things here, we need to also look carefully at the costs of the movement. And I know you've got a cost item on top. You don't have a columnist that says do nothing, and I'm not recommending.
No, we're gonna talk about that in a second.
Right, well, you know, you said that it was about seven hundred dollars. It's gonna roll off, this, I probably didn't realize that, but let's accept it, seven hundred dollars. That means over the next twenty years, if we did nothing, and I'm not suggesting, that the average or the standard person would pay fourteen thousand dollars less in property taxes. Again, it doesn't do nothing. But all of these numbers, like nineteen dollars for a grade problem here, I mean, that's ninety dollars more than we're paying, or less than we're paying now, but it's not seven hundred dollars less.
Right.
And when we get, sorry if I've got all the time to get to here, but the point is that this is a useful and necessary process, but there's a huge step that says, how do we communicate this to the community and get buy-in for this? And Eric has always been willing to spend money on things that are needed, especially for, you know, schools and students. He'd not been willing, and a whole bunch of failed bond issues, he'd not been willing for people to throw in things and say, wouldn't it be nice to have? The answer is yes, it would be nice to have, but we are the ones who are paying for all of these changes. So I guess the bottom line here is that, that there is, there's a big cost impact to this. It's not fully reflected by how much it's the reduction or increase from today. Because if you do nothing, you save seven hundred dollars, you know, in addition to this. Secondly, if we have people to sell to the community, it's not only the selling, it's some kind of spin, but convince the community that it's necessary. And third, the community is not probably gonna support multiple bond issues here every couple of years. Successfully supporting them. And if there are issues that are gonna come up with, you know, off of mistakes or other areas, you know, we should be careful not to promote bond issues that add things that are sort of superficial and then later come back and say, oh, but now we've got a huge need for capacity because of this new thing. Everyone knows what is potentially coming here, you know, for sure, but it's the case. And so I just encourage us to be careful in what we add on to the bond issue here that we're deploying, and which everybody likes the bond issue except nobody goes for it, you know? We got sixty percent, almost sixty percent of the bond issue that I referred to because we were conservative, transparent, and careful about what we're targeting.
So here's what we're gonna do. We're coming up on a level. I do wanna get you guys out of here in the next, you know, fifteen to thirty minutes, right? We've got two exercises to try to solicit some formal feedback, right? The first one is what I referenced before. The second one's gonna get a little bit to the value conversation that, what was your name?
Jim.
That you were referencing. So let's, let's do the comments first, right? So you've got your sticky notes, right? Any comments you would like to make, or if you want to think about things changing, reprioritizing, right? That's what we're trying to get now. And what I'm gonna ask you to do is write it. We're gonna take five minutes. I'm gonna set my phone for five minutes, right? I'd like you just to document it, whatever you want to document, and then go stick it up on the appropriate bucket, right? And then we're gonna come back and try to summarize those, and then we're gonna talk a little bit about the value proposition. Make sense? The doctor for the second exercise.
Not yet, that's gonna be the final thing.
All right. Thank you. What we're gonna do now, uh, before we move into the dot exercise, I know you guys all wanna use your dots. We've got an administrator at each board who's gonna try to summarize some of the themes of the comments that you guys posted on each bucket. And as we do that, I'll let the administrators introduce themselves. So, are we starting with John?
Yes.
You're up.
John Rich, Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. I have the pleasure of presenting the three for the $80 million dollar bucket. I, I think, uh, the summary here is that, um, the safety and security needs are well met and put here. It's a good place for that. There was some, uh, thought that this is also, uh, because it's a good place to start, stands a good chance of passage, so appreciate that. And, uh, the, the last one here is, uh... Yeah, that's about it. That, that, this is a good one. It starts well. It starts well, it's a good place to start, and it addresses the needs of the building and safety and security. Craig, you have a minute?
I'm ready. I was doing the themes, I, you know, I think between Kristen and I, we have the boards that were most sticky, so I needed a minute to kind of group them together. Uh, I'm Craig Winklevon, Assistant Superintendent for Operations at K-12 schools in the district. Uh, so some themes emerged on this board. Uh, the, the majority of comments were about middle school, prioritizing the school better, uh, additional space at middle school, or remove mobiles at middle school. That was kind of the theme in that category. Uh, next was support for the Fine Arts Center at the high school. Some posted notes about making sure that that remain a priority in, in this level. Um, and then several comments really about academics. Future-ready classroom space, academics over athletics, things of that nature, although we don't, we don't compartmentalize them that way. We see all those things fitting together, uh, overall for children. That's all part of the process of what we do, but that was kind of the theme that emerged there. Um, and then, uh, sensory rooms. A lot of comments about making sure sensory rooms are considered a priority. So these were the kind of four things that emerged.
Hello, my name is Dr. Kristen Paul. I'm the principal here at Station Middle School. Um, this board, some of the themes that are emerging, a lot of comments about the mobile classrooms possibly being moved to another priority area. Um, we do have some comments out here of focus on learning spaces, some specifics like the Early Learning Center, or North Barrington, or Huff. Some specific examples here. Um, as well as, uh, over here, we have some recommendations for Prairie, kind of what some people were talking about earlier, the exit entrance area, looking at some of the traffic patterns even around the high school. Um, and I didn't get to these at the bottom, but, uh, similar themes along those lines.
Good morning, I'm Travis Lawrence, Principal of our Prairie campus. We have a number of things over here that refer to separating gym space as to cafeteria space, uh, also looking at more sensory rooms, giving some more options there. We also have the B-bowl. These are our schools for the next 20 years. Um, we're talking a little bit about prioritizing, making sure we're looking at STEM and academics over some athletic pieces, and, uh, parking garage, like the idea of a parking garage, if you like that, and, uh, reworking drop-off traffic flow scenarios at schools.
Good morning, I'm Jim Olson, the Principal of Huff Street School. Uh, of the eight that are here, five address a third middle school. Uh, four of those five say do not do it. And one says build a middle school, so... Of the three remaining, uh, one said can language school come back on the list? So I know there's conversations about that. Um, another one, very concerned about future capacity issues, making sure that we see in the future and figure out that. And then the last one was just simply, thanks for doing all of this.
Okay, excellent. Okay, our next exercise, right? This is important for, for helping for, kind of something in the next session, right? So you have in your envelope, three dots, right? You should have one green, one yellow, one red, right? You, you understand a little bit now, kind of the value that gets reflected, right, in each of the different levels, right? And what the budget is, and how that may impact us as taxpayers. What we'd like you to do is use your green dot for kind of the level and that you think represents a value that you as a taxpayer are comfortable with, right? We'd like you to use your red dot to say that's a bridge too far, right? There's no way that, that I can see that this, this kind of level of value up to here justifies that budget, right? If there's something between your green and red dots, you don't have to use the yellow, but if there's something in between, right? You could use your yellow dot and say, I might be able to get here, but I'm not sure, right? Now, a couple, hold on, a couple more things. If you can only support a level, right, based on the reshuffling of some priorities, right? Because that was one of the things that came up here today, right? Then you can, you can take your little dot, put a little asterisk on it, right? So say, I could support this, but only if it's reshuffled, kind of consistent with some comments, right? If you wanna go in a step farther, if you, if you wanna elevate, say, my concern with this level is I'd like to elevate elementary, put an E. I'd like to elevate middle school, put an F. I'd like to elevate high school, put an H, right? So that'll give us some sense as to how you're making your value judgment.
On the green, put an E?
On the dot. On whatever dot you put it on, yeah. If you say I could support that green dot. Now, just so how, to, for clarity on how this would work, if you are one of the many in our community who might say, I don't like any of this, I'd rather just take that tax saving, right, and defer any big capital spending on the school, right? That would mean that you would put your red dot on that $80 million, right? Even that first level is too far for you, right? If you are some in the community who go to the other extreme, saying, whatever we can do for schools, this is all valuable for the schools, I'll spend whatever it takes to support the schools, you'd put your green dot all the way at the end, right? Yep.
So, we catalog. So, obviously, we're saying these are arbitrary values that you pick to put things in buckets. So let's say we want something in between, but with an emphasis on that means, you know, between the, 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 with red, or the sort of...
Right. So I'd say, we're gonna figure that from the sake of just kind of compartmentalizing here. So for instance, let's say you were comfortable with $100 million, right? Then put, put a green on the 80, put a yellow on it, right? So we know somewhere in between you're, you know...
Red, maybe what you, what you want.
Yeah, you want, yeah.
Middle school.
Right, right, right. It's a complicated thing because there's a lot of things, but we're also trying to just get a quick sense for how you guys are looking at the value. Yes?
Just real quick, I think this is a great exercise, but this is just a small...
It is?
...piece of the whole community.
Understood.
So my recommendation is to maybe take this line out to the whole committee, just to get a sense for where people's...
We will, and we are having those...
200 to 50, 150.
We're having, the, one, we're having the conversation. Two, it becomes hard without having the conversation we just had.
Right.
Two, hold on, let me finish, let me finish, let me finish. It's also difficult because we are confined by law about things we can ask, right? So we'd have to be very careful. Like, I'm not, I'm not asking you what level of referendum you can support. I can't ask that question. But I can ask you kind of just your sense of priorities and value, right? So we, we'd have to be really careful in an online survey of staying within some legal guidelines that we've got.
That's what a balance was.
Right, just clarifying, purely dollar value, not what falls under the...
No, no. I need you to do the value that you would get, but if you would, if you say, look, I, I can...
Like the changes that are up there now?
Yeah, so if you wanna, I could support 150, but I would need to reshuffle it, right? That's where you're, that's where you put the asterisk.
Yes, it's things like a stoplight, the colors, like a...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. What you're comfortable with, what you're not comfortable with, and somewhere in the middle if you have a certain... Now, if you say, for instance, I can support kind of generally the value in 150, but not in 200, then you'd put a green here and a red here, and there's no yellow, right? Now, so we all have kind of a nice visual before we break the meeting. You'll see on the boards, right, at the bottom of the boards are three columns, right? So if you're gonna put a green dot on a board, put it in that far left column. If you're gonna put a red dot on a board, put it in the far right. If you're gonna use a yellow dot, put it in that middle column. Does that make sense? Any other questions before you put your dots on?
Yeah, well, just more just writing the hard and poker things, put this...
Well, we'll talk about that at the end of this, because there's a whole bunch of questions like that. Okay, go put your dots on.